Wake Cross presents an election forum. For Forest Park City Council, there are five members running for three seats. They are, in alphabetical order, Regina Collins, Denise Holt, David Lives, Matthew J. Robinson, and Charles Southall.
Welcome to yet another Wake Cross Election Forum. This being for Forest Park City Council. I'm Jason Grisgorek, Wake Cross Community Media's Government Access Coordinator, joined with Jenny Key from the community press, ready to answer all questions to our panel. I'm very fortunate to have two of the members joining us tonight. We have Denise Holt and David Lives. We're hoping that Charles Southall will be joining us momentarily. Unfortunately, Mr. Robinson has declined our invitation, and Ms. Collins has received a certified letter. Unfortunately, she did not answer our call. So at this point, I will give the lowdown here. We will start out with a two-minute opening statement. From there, we will open the phone lines and emails to you, the voting audience at home, and then we will start answering our questions here. Long night already. We're going to start with Ms. Holt for a two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Denise Holt, and I'm seeking my third term as a city council member. I want you to know I am a person of high integrity. I'm transplant, transparent. I am my own person. I live in Forest Park, and everything that affects the residents, affects my family and me, it's personal to me. All of the decisions that I make are based on what I think is best for all residents. Sometimes unfavorable decisions are made in order to realize favorable results. Quality of life is of the utmost importance to my family and me, and that includes all of the residents of Forest Park. If I could cut taxes today, I would. What I can promise is that I will work to maintain tax stability. I promise to promote economic development. I am an advocate of a strong property maintenance. I am diligent in enforcing the city's codes and ordinance. Thank you for this time, and I ask for your vote on November 3rd for City Council of Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. David, two minutes to you as well.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Lives, and I am seeking a, this would be third term, full-term on council. I wanted to point out that I, a resident of Forest Park, moved here in 1976 and raised my children, and now I'm working raising grandchildren, or at least having them over on Sunday for dinner. But I served on various boards and commissions before I ran for city council. The main reason I ran for council the first time is the same reason I'm running now. It's to make Forest Park a better place than it already is to live and to meet the challenges that we face. We do have challenges, quite a few of them, but we've been able to weather most of them with common sense and good fiscal responsibility. Our main focus has been on safety issues, police and fire, which would continue under my, if I was elected to council again. Also, economic development is extremely important and ties into the other item I'm interested in, that is roads and keeping roads in good condition. You have to work on the money end of it first before you can start solving some of these problems. We've been very fortunate with the finance and fiscal activities, especially since we were, as most communities suburbs, were dealt with the loss of funding. So we've been able to weather that and continue, and I'm asking for your vote November 3rd. I should add quickly that there are three seats open: Denise Holt, mine, and Mr. Southall, Charles. And we're kind of going to add together since we're currently on council together. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for joining in. And of course, we will be, hopefully, having Mr. Southall join us as well. But at this moment, we are going to open up the phone lines and emails to you, the voting audience at home. If you are watching this evening, on October 6th, please join in. You can give us a call at our phone number, 825-3971, or the email, live@wacross.org. All questions will be answered here this evening. A little rule of the road here: you must be a Forest Park resident to ask a question. Secondly, please give the phone handle your name and part of town in which you live. Better be Forest Park, watching you. And then make sure you can give a little bit of an idea of the question you will be asking. The question must be asked to all panelists involved. With that, we're going to start with David. You'll be answering our first question, and it will go directly to Denise. These are two-minute answers. Mr. Lives, looking at the current makeup of the city of Forest Park, what do you consider the top three issues that are affecting the city as of today?
Okay, thank you. The top one is the one I mentioned in my introduction, the safety departments, police and fire. It's a kind of a thing that your residents count on, and fortunately, as Denise said, we were able to keep staffing, in fact, increase some of it with police and fire. Last night was great because we promoted three officers for the fire department internally, which makes us extremely happy that we can promote from within. The second issue, I would say, is economic development, getting businesses and other activities to move into Forest Park. We're in stiff competition with other suburban units as well as the city, so our current economic development director does an outstanding job of bringing new businesses to Forest Park. The last item would be our roads, making sure they're in as best repair as possible within our financial constraints. We'd like to do all of them at one time, but it's just not feasible. But those would be the three I would count on.
All right. Ms. Holt, same question to you as well.
You said what's affecting?
Affecting, that's most affecting the city of Forest Park at the time.
Well, we've had a downturn, a big problem with foreclosures, which has caused, you know, a problem. It's like cause and effect. It has caused problems with the city. We, as many of the neighborhoods, we did have a downhill spiral, but we're beginning to come back up now. As we know, it's much easier to fall downhill than it is to climb back up. We have had some issues. We did have to lay some people off, and we had to make some adjustments with the tax, which I know people are not happy with, but we had to do that in order to keep our policemen and our firemen. We want to make sure that our residents are safe. So money has been an issue because when houses foreclose, when businesses leave, then Forest Park lose money, lose tax dollars with that. So we had to make some changes in order to try and compensate for some of the losses that we had. So that's one main thing. As I said, foreclosures and some business leaving, but we are on an upward spiral right now, which has happened. Roads, too, I mean, have been pretty bad, and as David said, we've had issues, and we don't have the money to fix all of the roads at one time. Right now, we're dealing with the main thoroughfares and trying to get them and working to the other residential streets that are not as traveled as much as the main streets that they're working on now. But we are doing a lot of great things in Forest Park, so, you know, I love Forest Park. I'm living here, and we're doing a great job.
Wonderful. Denise, this question comes to you. You brought up, you both brought up pretty much the same things. There's a little bit of a variance there, but that's fine. The big one that I want to start on is redevelopment in business. Where do you see that needs to go, considering we have obviously the 275, the Woodin Road Corridor, the Hamilton Corridor? Where do you see business going in the city of Forest Park?
I think we're, as I said, we are on an upward spiral. We're doing, I think we're doing a great job with retaining business. We retain Ameritas, you know, the largest employee that we have in the city, and we are bringing in, there are other businesses that are coming in the city. I think we've done an outstanding job for maintaining businesses that we have, and we've done a great job of bringing businesses in. Of course, business, some come and go, but we're working diligently to try and bring those, you know, fill those spots that are being left vacant.
David, same question.
Yes, thank you. Denise said it's pretty much going at it the best way we can with the finances that we have available, and since our financial, as Denise said, downturn has been happening, things are looking a lot better. We're able to, we have an economic development fund, and we will use that funding very carefully and leverage it as much as possible so that business can be offered some incentives to come to Forest Park rather than another community. We are working at making the entrances to the city attractive when some people come here to tour Forest Park and look at the businesses. If you've noticed, that Northland and also the Western Corridor have been redone. People ask why are we doing that? It's, again, to make it an attractive entrance to the city. As far as business retention and activity, we devote a considerable amount of time to it, and a lot of it comes to council for approval. I think Denise would agree with me that we approve them whenever possible, and if it's in our financial budget.
All right. This question comes from Jenny. Unfortunately, Jenny did have to step out for a moment, but I do have a question from her. We're going to start with Mr. Lives. Dave, how do you think that the city can improve property maintenance? And does the code need to change, or do you need stronger enforcement? I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lives.
Thank you. Yes, I'll start at the end of it. Yes, stronger enforcement. Unfortunately, it was one of the areas that was reduced when we had to cut back a bit, and we're looking at re-establishing that. Actually, a lot of it comes right down to the citizen of Forest Park that sees this type of a problem or sees something that needs to be improved, grass being too high or other maintenance issues. And usually, the resident will bring this to the attention of someone because it affects everyone's property values. I know there's a house on our street that was foreclosed, and fortunately, the bank has been keeping it going pretty well, so, you know, we're doing the best we can with it.
All right. Denise, same question to you as well.
I think stronger code enforcement. We need to enforce these codes because I am a stickler with property maintenance. I live in Forest Park. I don't want anybody to do anything that's going to cause my property to go down. I think we need to be, as council, need to be more vigilant in the city. When we see a violation, it should be reported immediately, and we ask that the citizens of Forest Park do the same thing because I want Forest Park to get back to be the way it was, the old Forest Park, where everybody cared for their property and they took care of it. So stronger enforcement is what I think needs to be done to help us improve.
All right. Denise, we're going to kind of follow up with the continuation of property maintenance, and you've hit on foreclosures. What, obviously, you're looking at definite code enforcement and heavy code enforcement. What, as council members and what, as the city, needs to be done to continue proper maintenance and proper care of these foreclosed homes so that, as you said, can return to that old Forest Park?
I wish we had the people or the staff that could follow up with the banks or the people that own the banks, that own these properties, to make sure they're taken care of. What Forest Park does, they go out and they themselves take care of the grass and, you know, the aesthetics of the property to try and keep it looking decent. And we don't, I mean, we just don't have the staff to go out and make this a full-time job. So we need to stay on top of the people that own these properties.
Okay. Mr. Lives, same question to you.
Yes, thank you. Definitely, we try to keep as much pressure on the people that abandon the property and if it sits vacant. As I said, there's one on my block that's like that. Fortunately, I questioned some people that were at the house, and they said the bank is at least taking care of the grass cutting and some of the aesthetic. So that's extremely important to keep the houses up. Unfortunately, we have the opposite end, too, of keeping houses up. We've had to sadly demolish some also, but it goes through a very rigorous process. You don't just drive there with a bulldozer one day and take it down. It goes through extreme amount of legal issues, but sometimes it reaches a point where it's just not salvageable. Some of the houses that were salvageable, we sold a Habitat for Humanity, and we've done that recently again, and there's other folks that want to fix them up and resell them perhaps. So we're trying to get the foreclosed ones inspected as soon as possible, and again, as Denise said, we'll cut the grass, we'll put it on your tax bill, but we'll take care of that property as much as we can with our means that we have.
All right. I'm going to keep following up. I liked Denise's term and the idea of old Forest Park, keeping it, we've said here many times, keeping the forest in Forest Park. We've said many different things that keep the revitalization of the city going. Dave, I'm going to start with you. Let's talk about incentives and moving forward. What can council do, or were you to be re-elected to council? What can you do to bring that old field back, but yet still bringing something new and fresh to the table?
Yes, I think what can be done, because I moved here, maybe not in the real old days, but at least 1976, which my kids think is really, really ancient. But when we moved here, you were right, it was a different Forest Park. We, the neighbors got together. We'd have a little get-together. They have a park kind of thing. It's not a legal official park, but up the street where the big water tower is now. We used to get together, everybody would bring something to eat, and you got to know your neighbors. You know who will live next to you, and not only that, at the other end of the court. That's kind of vanished. We haven't, at least, I've not been invited to one for a long time. And, you know, some people go, where did you? The other day, a lady came to me and asked, brought me a dog and wanted to know if it was mine. And I said, I already have four. I don't need another one. But she wondered, where do you live? And so the old Forest Park was, we knew our neighbors, there were bowling teams, they had all kinds of activities, and maybe that's possible. I wouldn't say it's impossible to do that again and bring that spirit back.
Denise, same question.
I think we first have to clean up Forest Park. Get rid of the drugs. Get rid of the guns. Take them out of Forest Park. We need to get, once they're gone, then people are not afraid to come to Forest Park now. When you talk to some people now, they have negative things to say about Forest Park, and I don't like that. I really don't like it. And property maintenance, that has to be re-looked at, keeping up the property, getting rid of the drugs, getting these people that are committing crimes out of our neighborhood. Once we can get that cleaned up, I think we can get back to the old Forest Park. Well, people are not afraid to speak to their neighbor, talk to their neighbor. Now, people are afraid to talk to their neighbors because they're afraid. You parked in my driveway. You parked across my driveway. They're afraid they're going to get shot. I don't want that in Forest Park. I want people to be able to talk to their neighbors in Forest Park. Get rid of the crime. Get rid of the drugs. Get rid of the criminals, and we'll be back to old Forest Park.
All right. Ms. Holt, we're going to bring the next question back to you, and this is coming from Jenny. Thank you for bringing a new question in. What are the most important infrastructure improvements that the city, that need the city's attention, and how do you plan on tackling them? Denise, we're going to start with you on that.
Well, everybody, everybody knows that the mall, it's, darn it, that's the biggest one there. There are no words, and there's not very much that council can do about that mall. We don't own it, so there's nothing we can do. I wish I can give you an answer that people will like, that we're going to tear it down, we're going to sell it. We can't do that. We're dealing with, we're dealing with a third party, somebody else owns that property, so there's nothing. But that is the biggest eyesore in the city of Forest Park. I have no other answers. I have no other answer. As I said, I am transplant. I have no other answer for that. I wish I did.
Mr. Lives, same thing.
Yes, well, as far as infrastructure, I guess that's what I would take out of the, also, that it zeroes in on the mall. The infrastructure of most of the other utilities and so forth in the city are kept up very well. The mall, as Denise was saying, is a real challenge to us. There is periodic interest in it. A lot of people come and have ideas. Unfortunately, they don't bring any money with them, so they have, we've got plenty of ideas, and there are still people contacting us or our economic development. It's kind of unique because it really sits in two communities, Fairfield and Forest Park, so we have to work together with them. But that would be probably an item of infrastructure sitting there, and it's like the big elephant in the closet, you know? We want to do something with it, but it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of piggybacking on a comment that was made a little bit earlier, and I think we've said this many times before, especially as we've dealt with the state of Ohio cutting the local government fund, less is more, and the city has had to do that. We've both made mention of what the city has done. How much further can the city do more with less, and to what degree can we say enough is enough, that we need more? And Dave, Mr. Lives, we're going to start with you on that.
Okay. We reached that point, actually, a while back, as Denise said. We really struggled at council to what should we do. All of a sudden, we began to see, it hitting our books, that we were going to be in trouble, not just in 2015, but it would get worse in the future years. We had to stop the bleeding, and we took action, which, as Denise said, isn't popular, but we changed the credit that was given. We had reached the point where we couldn't do anything else, and believe me, we tried every which way but lose to find another way. You can only squeeze so much out of the money tree to get it down. I wanted to say that the department heads, and especially the city manager, bent over backwards, doing things to conserve money. And that, by the way, is still going on. It didn't stop. We're still not in a situation. It's gotten a lot better, but we're in a situation where we are doing things to conserve money. Some positions have been merged together, and we're doing other things to conserve our funding. But, you know, unfortunately, fortunately, right now, I guess, the tax situation is stabilized.
Denise, same question.
As David said, we did reach that point where enough is enough. When we got hit, I mean, it was, it was a blow, and then, you know, to have to come back and change the tax, that was a blow. I did not necessarily go along with doing that, but it was something that had to be done. I said, sometimes unfavorable decisions are made to try and to get favorable results. So we had to make a decision. We're either going to go and do this, or we're going to have to cut the firemen, to cut the policemen, and that is something that we didn't want to do because we know if, if somebody needed an ambulance, we wanted that ambulance to be there for them. If somebody needed a police officer, we knew that we needed that. We, I mean, we were not liked, and probably still not liked. I don't like myself because we have to do that because that affects me. Whatever happened in Forest Park affects me also, and it was. Enough was enough. I'm just praying that we won't have to go back and collect any more taxes because I can't afford it either, just like the people, the rest of the residents, I can't either. So I'm going to fight, fight to the end to try and get this tax stabilized, and pray that we get some new businesses in here, fill all of the slots so that can close the gap on what we lost.
Excellent. We are halfway through our evening this evening, so if you are joining us on October 6th, please join in. 825-3971, live@wacross.org is the email. All questions will be answered this evening. I will return my questioning back to Ms. Holt. Denise, we were kind of touching on a subject that the city is looking at and has looked at. It's called, of course, that infamous word, shared services. Do we need to continue that further and extending our hand or having our hand extended to one another, or is that something we need to retool and look at differently in the city?
What you mean, shared services?
Shared with other organizations, be it Colerain Township or Springfield Township, which I know that we already do, but is it time to have the hand extended further or should, vice versa?
I think the shared services, it's great. You know, to say extend it further, I don't know what you mean by further.
Have we, have we reached a saturation where we need to ask for more help? I guess is where I'm going.
I don't think we're at that point where we need to ask for more help when it comes to the fire, police.
I'm, that's where I'm leading, is that we, our next question will be leading towards safety. So, yes, you're correct.
I don't, I think our firemen are outstanding. We have the best police force in the country. So I think we, I think we do great, but it does not hurt when there's a forlorn fire that other fire departments are called. It doesn't hurt if there's something going down that we don't have enough officers to handle it. It does not hurt to ask for help. So continue to ask for help, sure, when it's needed, yes.
Dave, same question.
Yes, I think that's correct. You know, we already do the shared service portion of it as mutual aid with the fire department, and we get a report every month that shows how many mutual aid runs there were. So we do share that activity. The police work with their counterparts in our neighboring communities. I know I was in Fairfield for a situation, and the police officer there was praising Forest Park Police and how professional and how cooperative they are to come to the aid when they're needed in Fairfield. And vice versa, we can use other people's help. So we do, maybe it's not on a formal basis totally, but it is being shared on a regular basis with the other communities.
Well, Mr. Lives, I know that you are a part of the safety committee, and you do make mention of that when you are in meeting and council. We just had a levy pass last year for fire. Our safety services, are we safe? If someone were to ask in Forest Park, are we safe? Are we there?
Yes, as much as we can be there, counting all the possibilities that can occur. For instance, the fire department puts in their monthly report, a little reminder of safety issues, and last night I saw it was carbon monoxide, and they were given write-up on how to be safe with it. These things are available to every resident from our monthly reports. It's the fire department's report. Unfortunately, I had a situation personally where a friend of mine's son died from carbon oxide poisoning of a heater, so situations are real that they face. Pretty much, that covers it as far as the possibilities that we have.
Denise?
Are we safe? Absolutely.
Very simple answer, I see. Denise, I'm going to continue. The next question goes to you. It is coming from Jenny. Jenny asks, let's talk about some goals. Obviously, you're coming back to your seats. If you are re-elected, what are your goals in the next four years? Denise, starting with you.
Well, as I stated earlier, my one goal, I will not vote for any tax hikes unless it just absolutely becomes necessary. That's one goal of mine. I will not. I can't afford it, and I know the residents, a lot of them can't afford it. I will not. I will not. I will, we will have to look at everything, leave no stones unturned before I would vote for, to hike taxes again. The goal is still to try and, and we'll offer some incentives to fill the gaps, fill, to bring in new businesses to try and do that. We want to do that. As I said earlier, I want to get back to that old Forest Park. Those buildings are there for a reason. They were full at one time. I wanted to get back to that. I want it to be that we are able to offer some incentives to bring people back and to the, to the neighborhood. I want to stay on top of the crimes here in Forest Park. I want them gone. So I'm going to do anything, everything possible that we, you know, that, that's gone. I want that, that gone. The property maintenance, stay on top of that, because I don't want my property value to go down, my neighbor doesn't. So those are the four things that I am passionate about, and will work toward those goals.
Mr. Lives, same question.
Yes. Our goals are pretty much outlined. We did actually do a strategic plan, which will be tied in with the budgeting figures. It's not a final document yet. But it gives council some direction, both cost-wise and document-wise, to follow. As far as personal goals for the city, I want to, again, have a continuation of a outstanding police and fire department. That's the best we can possibly do. Also, the enforcement of property management, as we were talking about. We want the community to look attractive when people come here. I know I've had comments on the planting groves that they do at the city entrances. People think they're really neat and look nice. So let's keep that goal going of making it an attractive city. Also, as far as economic development, the goal to attract businesses to our city that 'll enhance the quality of life. The quality of life is thrown around as a term. What does this mean? It means just what it sounds like, that we want people to live here and that people, our residents, are proud to be part of Forest Park.
All right. You, you touched on something, and I was going to ask this a little bit later, but I think this is the best time than ever. Dave, you had brought up, we want to make it an attractive city. We want to entice and to, to keep people in. Why do you believe it's so hard to either retain or to attract new residents here in the city of Forest Park?
Well, I think it's, some of it comes incorrectly, as Denise was saying, you know, that we're not shooting people every day here, that it's a safe community and needs to be made safer. But to make it as attractive as possible, I mentioned the entrances to the city that have been quite a bit of money. The one entrance was $3 million to enhance it. Fortunately, the city didn't have to pay that. We got grants and came down to where it was relatively light on the amount that we had to pay. But again, that makes things look nice. When you drive up those roads, have the planning basins, and have the attractions to the city, I think that would make people more interested in moving here. Plus, our housing values, I know when I moved here, it was an outstanding value for the money. We want to make sure that continues.
Denise?
What makes it harder, I think, to get people here? We don't have the, we don't have the money that your Masons, your Westchesters have. We don't have the space that they have. So it's, it's harder for us to fit the business with the space that we have available. Forest Park is landlocked. We cannot, you know, we can't build. We can't build a big building. So we have to reach hard for the smaller business to, to fill up the, the small areas that we have. So there's strong competition. That's the hardest issue. The competition is strong. And sometime we can win, sometime we can't.
Might be a very difficult question. I'm going to follow up on that, then. If, if the competition is very tough, how does Forest Park step up to that plate? How, as council members, talking with city manager Ray Hodges, how do you go about to be able to say, we are just as good as the Masons? We are just as good as those Westchesters? We are Forest Park?
We have, I have to hope that we're, that we can match or do better on some of the offers that are given to whomever. I hope, I would hope that we would be able to beat out some of the, the offers that the businesses are given to bring them here in Forest Park. Forest Park is a quaint city, you know? Come to Forest Park, because you don't want to be in all of this traffic. I don't want to go anyplace where I have to sit in traffic for two hours to get to a store. Go out to dinner. Forest Park can offer you that. You don't have to wait for that. Come to Forest Park. So we have to, we have to do some, I think, marketing and some serious planning on what we can do. We do have, we have a great economic development team, which I, you know, that, you know, some marketing. Do some marketing.
Mr. Lives, same question.
It's just what Denise said, marketing. We're doing the best we can. We have one individual that is the whole Economic Development Department, is one person. And to be honest, he goes at it very, very diligently. I've watched, I was a member, still am a member, of Economic Development Commission. What we do to attract businesses, and it's been successful, is offer them tax incentives, famous TIF, Tax Increment Financings are available. We do have the Development Fund that's available. This is not a gigantic amount, but it can tip the scale in some cases where we're competing with another community. So we'll put that forth. And that's about, you know, the city's limited in how much you can put on the table, but we do the best we can with our resources. And it's working. We're attracting just that another new business move in.
Excellent. All right. Another question from Jenny coming in. What accomplishments are you most proud of in your terms, working in the city, for the city of Forest Park? Mr. Lives, we'll start with you.
Well, I think the thing that caught me the best is just enjoying living here. You know, I've had opportunities, as my neighbors have, of packing up and moving somewhere else. But I think, you know, it's been great to be here. I enjoy the community. Education is great for my children, and the whole area is what I'm, what I like. So, you know, as far as why I'm here and why I'd stay, it's the, as we mentioned, some of the things, the outstanding police and fire, economic development activity, which will help the taxes in the long run. Some of these tax increment things drop off after a few years. So in the short run, we'll give them a tax break. In the long run, we'll get more funding through future taxes.
All right. Denise?
It's been a tough road. It has really, really, really been a tough road these, these last four years. It's been rough. But, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of how I have responded to, I guess, the needs of the citizens. You know, I, I, I try to, anytime a citizen come to me, they do a lot, with issues, I take pride in what I do. So I, I try to, whatever it is they're complaining about asking, probably not even the complaint, but whatever it is that they're asking, I try to accomplish what it is that they're asking me to do. So I take pride in that. And everybody that's ever come to me with an issue, I have gone back at, either gotten it corrected, or gone back and given that information, taken that information to the, the person that could do something about it. So I take, I take, like I said, pride in doing that. And, and I accomplish, accomplish the fact that they know me, they know that they can come to me, they know that I am transplant, transparent, that I am going to talk, I'm going to get that word right tonight. They know that I am going to do what it is that I said I'm going to do.
All right. We have a few minutes left. I have a few minute, other questions to go, but if you are interested in joining in, 825-3971. Live@waycross.org. Please ask those questions. We are running down to the last bit. So Jenny and I will be asking those questions, unless you have something on your mind. Coming back to Denise, we haven't talked about it yet. We've, we've kind of skirted around the topic, but roads. We are seeing wonderful developments in, in our corridors. We're seeing, and of course, as described, it was a, a project that was in the making. But there are other roads that need some attention as well. What do you see needs to be done, and how can the city do it?
Well, there is a plan. They, I mean, there is a plan to do all of the roads in Forest Park. But we cannot, with the funds that we have, we cannot do them all at the same time. So what they're doing, like I said, they did the corridors first, and then they're going to go to the worst streets, the streets that need the most work. So they're doing it. They have a list of the streets that they're going to be working on, even yet this year, and then their streets next year, until we get all of the streets done.
Dave, anything different to, to add to that?
No, that's exactly 100% correct, so, thanks, Dave.
All right. We had made mention earlier, obviously, that the, we had a levy go up on the ballot last year, and it passed. We're thankful for that. We do still have services in that regards. Denise, you made mention that you do not want to see any other taxes or any other levies happen. With the way that the state of Ohio is, and the way the, the federal government can be, are we fiscally sound in the city of Forest Park? Or is there going to come a time when we may need to be asking the citizens for another levy or some help, assistance for the city?
That's me.
And that'd be to you, Dave. I'm sorry.
I think we're fiscally sound presently, and thanks to our finance director, we extend this out for five years, which is why we had to go to the change in the credit, which affected taxes. But we had reached the point where that was necessary. I don't know, and I don't think anybody in this room or in the city could tell me that we're going to run into something that costs us a lot more money and hits the fan, but I think Denise is right. None of us are in the mood right now in council to raise taxes or do anything of that sort. The fire levy, again, was hitting, had to be done. Engines are getting old, the things are wearing out. And it was voted on really very substantially with a yes vote by our residents, which gave a great deal of moral support to the fire department. So, no, I don't know what lies ahead. Hopefully, it doesn't involve raising taxes, and I think we all agree that that would be our last choice, if a choice was even offered of that possibility.
Ms. Holt?
I think we're sound for now. And what I said was, I will not vote to hike taxes. Not anytime soon. No time soon. We will have to do everything else possible. We have to look at every other possible option, and still keep the community safe, before I would vote for higher taxes anytime soon. Right now, we're in a pretty good position. And as I said before, I'm hoping and praying that we can fill these vacancies, which will fill the gap, and we wouldn't have to go back to the citizens. So we're going to, as council and as economic development, we're going to have to get busy and do what we need to do in order to avoid asking citizens for more money, because that is something that I don't want to do, and have no intention of doing it.
Fair. All right. Again, we are running down low to the last bit, so let's, let's go on to a cheerier side. We've looked at, at many aspects of the city. We've talked about what you're most proud of on council. Let's, let's look at something that most people don't get a chance to look at, and this is actually going to go to Denise. Denise, what are you most proud of, of the city itself? What makes Forest Park, Forest Park?
We have, we have the best police department. We have the best fire department. We have a beautiful city. I mean, it's all around, it's a good city. The housing here in, in, in Forest Park is affordable. I mean, you have all, all incomes in Forest Park. So it's, it's, it's a beautiful city. We're not, we're not all bad. I mean, you know, there are a lot of opportunities in, in the city. The city offers a lot of hope to the city. You know, there's, we had the tires, the, you know, collecting of the tires, collected paper for shredding. We have the chipper program. We have, we have white Gwen, I mean, you know? Right. So we have that. I mean, we have a lot. We have home improvements. We have one going on now. It's income-based, but it's home improvement, you know, to help people out that, you know, needs some stuff. So there's a lot to offer in Forest Park.
Okay. Dave, same question.
Okay. And the question was, I want to be sure I answered.
What makes Forest Park the place? What are you most proud of that makes Forest Park, Forest Park?
Well, I think, going back to what I said earlier, was when I go to meetings outside of the city, if it's something in Columbus, and tell them where you're from, and if it's a police group, they'll say, wow, you've got a fantastic police department down there. Or if I'm going through a fire get-together with chiefs, again, they're all commenting how terrific Forest Park is, and how easy it is to work with. And I think those kind of things make you proud when you go outside the area, even outside the city or the state, and you tell where you're from, and they go, wow, that's got a great reputation, they've got a terrific department down there, they're very professional, terrific city manager, and an environmental department that's fantastic. So those kind of things are what we look forward to, and what other cities are looking at.
All right. Well, I believe we have, we're going to wrap this up a little bit early, because I want to make sure that you get plenty of time for a closing statement. So usually, I tell people, a minute. I'm going to give you as much time as you need. Two minutes, at least a maximum on this, for a closing statement. I'm going to start with you, Dave.
Okay, thank you. I just want to ask the residents for their vote again, and I would ask them to remember, the three of us on city council now, that were tried and true, that faced the metal of difficulties, and have survived and made it better. So Denise Holt, myself, Dave Lives, and Charles Southall are asking for your vote to continue our progress with the city. We have the experience, and we've been through the tough parts. It's probably the kind of thing we don't want to do every so often, but we want to continue the growth of the city and make it, what you said earlier, the attractive place for people to move, work, and live in. Thank you.
Denise, same question.
I think I've said a lot tonight, and if you're like me, you're ADD. So you only retain a little. So what I'm asking is for your vote on November 3rd, for my third term as city council member. I'm proud to serve on Forest Park Council. I'm a proud resident of the city of Forest Park. I have no intentions of leaving here anytime soon. And, and I, I really care for the residents of Forest Park. I would do anything possible to help you, do whatever I can. So on November 3rd, I'm asking you for your vote. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both for joining us this evening. It's greatly appreciated. I want to thank all of you for joining us as well. We apologize that Mr. Southall couldn't make it. I hope he's well, and we do wish him the best. I wish, we wish everyone here on the panel well as well. If you need more information in regards to the upcoming election, you can go and watch any and all of our election forums, as well as going to the Hamilton County website, so that you are prepared for the Tuesday, November 11, November 3rd. Election polls do open very early, so keep that in mind. If you need more information besides our forums, you can go to votehamiltoncounty.org. That is your one-stop shop to get all the information on issues and candidates that affect you. I'm Jason Grisgore, Waycross Community Media's Government Access Coordinator, allowing you to talk one-on-one here tonight about the issues of the city of Forest Park. We look forward to seeing you next time, and make that conscious decision, and vote on November 3rd. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Waycross takes no position on candidates or issues. We provide these forums so that our viewers may be better informed voters for the November 3rd election. We provide these forums so that our viewers may be better informed voters for the November 3rd election.